All right, good evening. I'd like to call the April 11, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. Please join me for a moment of silence for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Tim Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhafer?
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Mayor, I would request that we add a closed session.
All right.
Anyone who would like to make a... I move to revise the agenda to add the closed session, please.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Meyerhafer, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
First speaker is Ms. Lucy Fox. Ms. Fox, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hi, where should I go?
Right up here to this podium.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Thanks. I'm Lucy Fox. Many of you know me. I am a Belvoir mom. Last October, Compute North's crypto mine was set for Belvoir School Road. As a parent, as many of you can relate, when something that you don't know what it is threatens your child, you find out what it is. And that's what I did. I researched heavily and worked with the Belvoir community. Compute North pulled out of Belvoir and then moved its sites to another community north of the river. What kind of person would I be if I stopped when my daughter was safe from the noise, but our neighbors were not? Crypto mining is banned in China because they know that there is no way to meet climate change goals with electricity guzzling crypto. Compute North shared that most of their investors are from China. There is a cost to crypto mining, and someone has to pay it. Some here have said, somebody somewhere is going to make money off of crypto. Why shouldn't it be us? Well, it matters how you make your money. It matters if you pass the burden of the costs on. Now, I'm a white lady, but I'm going to name the elephant in this topic. And is it a coincidence that Compute North first selected Belvoir, a community of color, and now has moved to another? Is this environmental injustice? Does it, could it possibly have something to do with race? In fact, there is a lawsuit right now against Compute North alleging just exactly what I just said, that racism and also possibly securities fraud is at play. And the Belvoir site is actually mentioned in the lawsuit. I don't know how many of you read it. It matters who you do business with. Last September, Compute North made what they called a good business decision, and they moved their massive equipment from Denver to GUC property here where it sits now. They did that before any local government made any approval. Now, we don't need to spend time wondering why they thought that was a good business decision, but because they're a private company, private companies make those decisions all the time. But GUC is a publicly held utility, and it is overseen by you all. And they are spending millions to roll out the carpet for Compute North, a company already involved in a lawsuit and an industry that the community does not want. It matters how GUC spends our money, and it matters how you oversee them. And it matters, most of all, who you choose to protect and who you don't.
That's time.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Ms. Vivian Kenyon. Ms. Kenyon, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Praise the Lord. It is my motto. I'll read that to praise the Lord before I speak. And then I want to say good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
My name again is Vivian Kenyon, and I wanted to say this, that Mr. Tom Barnett, Director of Planning, met with a few of us last Friday. And he informed us that there is no submission now, but once the submission is made, the process is private. Until the contract is completed, then it becomes public. If crypto mining is going to be allowed in our beautiful city, in our beautiful neighborhood, we won't and deserve transparency before the contract is set. We want to know how loud the noise will be, where the site is, how much electricity it will use, and how will that impact our electric bill? I'm an outdoor person, love and enjoy everything God has provided for us. I enjoy walking a mile every day in my neighborhood, working in my flower garden, doing things that help me to keep myself healthy. But if crypto mining come in our neighborhood, that's going to stop me from doing all these things and trying to keep myself healthy. We are asking you to show empathy to the students, the teachers, and the citizen north of the river by stopping the process now. John Leonard, son, sung his song, his daddy's song, "No Hope," to the Ukrainian people. Right now, I have no hope in this system. But you can believe this, I have hope in God. He is in mighty one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next speaker is Mr. Walter Fields. Mr. Fields, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank the mayor Connolly and council members. You all know me. I've been here, I think I was here last month. Someone has to speak up and be brave, to speak out once again on what you have done in January. And we pray and hope that you would make a found decision and say no. Once that facility start, it is hard for them to stop. So we want you to stop before you start. Nobody is telling us everything is rosy and good. I don't hear it from you, nor do we hear it from GUC. We want transparency. We want to know the truth. We want to know where you're going to put this facility, and we want to know how loud this facility is going to be. As already indicated, there is a lawsuit out with this crypto currency mining already. I don't think they care anything about the citizens. All they think about is making un-currency, and all they think about is making that. I have lived in my community for 43 years, and I try to upkeep my resident. We try to keep our neighborhood looking good. And I know a little bit about crypto mining. Crypto mining is not good for human health. I've already done some study on that, as surely as traditional mining. All of this is for what, when you voted in January? What is it for? For a few handful of jobs, dangerous jobs? Job with exposure to hot heat, job that exposure to 90 degrees of noise? We don't need that. We ask that you would consider it. Is it so great? Why are all the secret? Why don't you let the citizens know what is going on? The council members that had voted in January, let us know what is going on. Be truthful to us. There's a word in the Bible that say, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." Now, we are not in bondage, but I want to be free so that I can be able to go to sleep at night without a lot of noise. I want to be free so when my grandchildren visit me, they can go out in the yard and play without having an earphone in their ear. I want to be free so that we can go, be able to go to sleep at night. Please consider and say no to crypto on your last vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional speakers.
Anyone else who would like to come speak during the public comment period can come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Jalen Lampa.
Can you say your last name again?
Lampa, L-A-M-P-A.
Thank you.
Well, councilors, first, thank you for letting me speak, and I am here with my colleagues. I understand that many of you may not be swayed by the religious persuasion of this, so I'd like to offer the economic standpoint from this. From what I can gather, Compute North offered a $55 million investment to Greenville, correct? Rick Smiley, you worked with them personally? And about 15 jobs?
Five.
I, you worked with Compute North at some point?
No, I've never spoken with Compute North.
Oh, my apologies. Now, with the recent IBCC report, we are attempting to keep the world from going above the 1.5 degrees Celsius to combat climate change. However, what you decided to do when bringing Compute North a crypto facility, they primarily run their computers on fossil fuels, and I hardly think it was a sensible decision to bring such an industry into this community when perhaps you could have gone with a renewable energy company that could have grown in more jobs and wouldn't have been such an eyesore on the community near Belvoir. And I understand, and that many of you may have some misunderstandings about how crypto works, but despite what anyone may say as for how it may be beneficial in the future, the long-term downsides of it only hurt members of the community, particularly those that are disenfranchised historically. And I only hope that all of you can make the right and moral decision in the future, both for ourselves and for our nation and our world as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lampa. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
And just to clarify, I did speak with Compute North at the council meeting, but I've never worked personally, individually with Compute North in any way. So, thanks.
Anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to, excuse me a second, our consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of minutes for the June 7, 2021 City Council workshop, August 9, 2021 City Council workshop, and March 14, 2022 City Council workshop. Item number four is an ordinance repealing and/or revising speed limits for various state maintained roads throughout the city of Greenville to concur with the Department of Transportation ordinances. Item number three is authorization to submit a 2022 Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant application. Item number four is an ordinance amending Greenville Utilities Commission FY 2122 gas fund budget. Item number five is a request to purchase replacement vehicles and equipment for various city departments. And item number six are various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. All right, motions been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Meyerhafer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which are our public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total of each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support, or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item, the first public hearing is a resolution approving in principle Public Finance Authority Retirement Facilities Revenue Anticipation Bond, boy, that's a mouthful, for Springshire Pre-Development Projects Costs, Series 2015.
Mayor and council, Emmanuel McGirt, City Attorney. The Springshire Retirement LLC is a building, is building a senior living facility off Highway 43. Springshire and Public Finance Authority are requesting that the council adopt a resolution approving bond issuances of $46 million in one of the public hearings and in the other one, $14 million plus dollars in proceeds. The city is just issuing a, just approving the bond issuance. The city is not responsible for the debt. Since the tax exempt bonds, since tax exempt bonds are being issued, the legislative body that has jurisdiction over the area is responsible for approving it. And tonight, we have a, we'll have a short presentation on Charles Boyer, who is bond council, bond council in this matter, is present to give a short presentation. He's also joined by John Small, who's counsel for Springshire.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Charles Boyer, I'm going to handle the presentation just for sake of convenience, but John Small is here for any questions involving the project. So we thought this would be helpful to raise for y'all and have a little presentation. So I thought I'd start off with quickly the expected community benefits of the senior living facility in the community. It'll be a rental project, appealing to a broad range of seniors in Greenville. It's constructed adjacent to a planned charter school for generational community. The site will feature many amenities, including a track and field, community garden, and a small amphitheater. The project will provide approximately 250 construction jobs, as well as 55 permanent jobs for the Greenville community. And the project is located wholly within the city of Greenville and will pay property taxes. So this is the request that I'm making to you as bond council. The Public Finance Authority of the State of Wisconsin and Springshire Retirement LLC, which is the authority and company, are requesting the city council approve the issuance of the bonds and the deemed issuance of the 2015 bonds. The 2015 bonds have already been issued, are already out there. When you adjust maturity provisions of the existing taxes and bonds for tax, federal tax, not state, you have to deem to re-issues, bring it back before y'all. The city, this is important, the city council's consideration item is required due to federal tax law and Wisconsin statutes governing issuance of bonds by the Public Finance Authority. The bonds will not constitute a debt of the city of Greenville, and there is no obligation anyway of City of Greenville to pay the debt. I thought it'd be helpful because most people don't deal with TEFRA Wisconsin law every day. So federal tax law, what you'll call it, TEFRA is a regulation which requires that tax exempt bonds that are issued be brought to a public hearing before the body in charge of the jurisdiction that the project will be located in, the city of Greenville. Wisconsin law, for the sake of this, is a very similar requirement, which is the project being financed with the bonds of public hearing as hell for the jurisdiction. There's two reasons why we're here from the city tonight. One is the project has been before y'all for zoning and other things. It used to be in an incorporated part of Pitt County, now it's in City Greenville proper. And I've already told you about the fact that Wisconsin law requires the city. This is just kind of my final slide. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Again, just a good benefit to the city, 250 construction jobs and 55 permanent jobs. The Public Finance Authority themselves have a meeting on April 20, 2022. They're expected to approve the bonds. It will be a formal groundbreaking. Again, I just want to stress, this is a federal tax law requirement and a Wisconsin requirement, so the city of Greenville is not obligated to pay the debt, and the city of Greenville has no obligation to pay the debt or any way of something for it. Happy to answer any questions you'll have. I just thought that might be helpful to wrap everyone's mind around everybody.
All right, are there any questions?
It's not a problem that our mayor is from Wisconsin.
I love Sheik's skirt. It's a great place.
It feels like it would be a problem, just saying.
But Greenville is my home.
Okay.
Good saying.
But no, it's, there's, it's just, the authority is located in Wisconsin.
Any other questions? Any other relevant questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or motion.
Do we, we have to consider it and approve it?
You would have to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move we adopt the resolution.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you very much. Madam Manager, we'll move on to our second, very similar, public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution approving in principle Public Finance Authority Senior Living Facilities Revenue Bonds for Rising Phoenix Project in one or more series to finance a senior living facility to be located in the city of Greenville.
Attorney McGirt, you got anything for us?
Mayor Kelsey already had staff report, so just have, need to have a public hearing and vote on it.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
We have to approve the item.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Meyerhafer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to other items of business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is a presentation by a commission, and that would be the Environmental Advisory Commission, and I'll call forward Dr. Bob Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor Connolly, members of the council. I'm delighted to present the Environmental Advisory Commission report for 2022. I'd like to, at the outset, recognize that Dr. David Ames is completing eight years on this commission and has been very instrumental in educating me and others about environmental issues. Tom Trevathan is the engineer on the commission. I'd also like to acknowledge the relationship we've had with Mr. Meyerhafer. He's been very diligent in answering questions that I have posed to him and in supporting our initiatives. Mr. Darrell Norris has also been very helpful in many ways. Looking back at what we presented in 2020, we wanted to establish a position of a sustainable city sustainability coordinator. We wanted to increase public awareness about environmental issues and support for sustainability and to encourage city council to implement environmental issues that were outlined in the 2016 Horizons Plan. No report was given from 2021. We've had many accomplishments in the last two years, and I'm really excited about one of them that I'll talk to, talk about in a few minutes. We received a presentation by Mr. Demery about problems with recycling in Greenville, and subsequently, the county has set up some glass recycling centers. We sent a letter to the city manager expressing concern about rezoning of Town Common. And the initiative that we are especially proud of has to do with doing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for city operations in Greenville. A little background, the Duke School of Environment requires that their graduates spend six months with either a government or a private entity on an environmental project. We made a prop, a proposal to the School of Environment that they measure greenhouse gas emissions by the city of Greenville for the fiscal year 2019, which was pre-COVID. Fortunately, they accepted that proposal, and two Duke graduate students spent six months measuring or estimating greenhouse gas emissions by the city of Greenville operations, and they just completed that. And three days ago, Friday, they presented their report, which I'll very briefly talk about later. We'll give more details about their recommendations. The reason why we wanted to measure greenhouse gas emissions by the city are that, number one, we knew it was a doable project because ECU has a sustainability officer, and ECU measured their own greenhouse gas emissions and subsequently was able to reduce the emissions by 30% over a five-year period. We also knew that the governor in 2018 issued Executive Order 80, which states that there is a goal of the state to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2025 compared to 2005 levels. So by us making a baseline measurement, we could then make subsequent measurements and hopefully follow this executive order. And finally, we know that greenhouse gases, which are produced primarily by burning fossil fuels, cause heat to be trapped in the atmosphere, and that generates the problems of climate change, including climactic tragic events such as hurricanes, tornadoes, drought, floods. So it's important that we address that issue. It's also important to note that other cities in North Carolina have sustainability managers and have been reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. We have also sent a letter to Mr. Cowan urging that the American Rescue Plan money be used to use protected bike lanes, increase EV charging stations, and invest in stormwater management. We encourage council to follow the 2016 Horizon Plan stipulations. We recently presented the Green Growth Toolbox, which is a series of tools that planning and zoning commissions can use when they are deciding on zoning changes, and it helps them to learn about environmental impact of making these changes. And the Green Growth Toolbox is being presented to planning and zoning this month. We also received a presentation from GUC about solar energy, and we raised concerns that GUC does not incentivize use of residential solar energy as much as other communities. In fact, Greenville has far less residential use of solar energy than many other communities in the state due to the fact that it is not very well incentivized by GUC. So our goals for 2022, number one, is that we hire a sustainability officer to implement the recommendations of the greenhouse gas inventory. And I'll just mention very briefly what the results were that were presented to us on Friday. Most of the greenhouse gas emissions by the city of Greenville come from vehicles, trucks and city-owned vehicles. And their recommendations, the low-hanging fruit to reduce emissions, would be altering the vehicle mix to include more EV vehicles, less diesel-fuel vehicles, and basically improve efficiency of these vehicles. They applauded the city of Greenville. We've already done a major effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by converting to LED lights. And they noted that that is really beneficial. They had other recommendations, and we'll give a more thorough report later when we've had time to discuss them as a commission. We believe that hiring a city sustainability officer will enable the city to follow up on the recommendations by the Duke Committee and to subsequently measure greenhouse gas emissions by the city and see if we've made an impact to reduce that. Again, ECU has done that. It's a doable project, and tracking greenhouse gas emissions is important for environmental issues. This would be aligned with what other cities in North Carolina have done. Charlotte, Asheville, Durham, Raleigh, and other cities have sustainability officers. They've measured greenhouse gas emissions, and they've made substantial reduction in that, which again goes along with the governor's executive order. We also suggest that this position could possibly be split with GUC because any efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions are directly related to GUC operations. We want to develop a website to encourage the public to be more environmentally conscious, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and to educate the Greenville citizens about greenhouse gas emissions and its impact on climate change. We want to encourage further GUC to make solar energy more attractive to residents, encourage more EV charging stations in the city, and recommend protected bike lanes in the city. And that concludes my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I just was going to thank you for your report and also for all the good work you guys are doing. I can tell you that 2/3 to 3/4 of the communications I've received from citizens this year deal with greenhouse gas emissions. So there's certainly a rise in attention to that issue. So to the extent you guys have been responsible for that, it seems to be working.
Thank you. I also failed to mention that this report by the Duke students was really made possible by Ms. Wall working with the students and by Daryl Norris, who's a city engineer. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Shaw, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and your service on the commission. I think I've said this before. If there was an award for the most dedicated group of citizens on a board or commission, it would be the Environmental Advisory Commission. I don't think there's a more dedicated group of people to serve on a board than you guys, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you to Dr. Ames for his eight years of service.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to item number 10. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a report on the Traffic Safety Task Force, and I'll call forward Chief Mark Holtzman for that presentation, and he'll introduce our guest.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor, Mayor Portem, members of council. Joined here today by our city engineer, Lisa Kirby, and two distinguished guests, and they are Sue Ann Pilgreen. She's the Program Manager of Injury Prevention for Viden Medical Health, and also Jeff Kavanis, the Division Engineer for NC DOT. So Lisa and I are going to kind of tag-team on the PowerPoint presentation, giving you an update on our Traffic Safety Task Force that we formed a few years ago, trying to reduce the number of crashes and get us out of that number-one position, which we've been successful. We want to show you a couple highlights of that program. Before I start, I do want to also thank Dr. Shaw for that presentation. Thank you for the recognition of the conversion of those LED lights. We're at about 7,000 of 8,000 lights already converted, and I just appreciate you pointing that out. And also sustainability, I do want to just give a shout-out to my colleague, Kevin Mulligan, for his work. He's always pushing us into electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles, and you approved some of those hybrids tonight. So he's always looking at ways to turn us a little more green. All right, we're here tonight to talk about these little yellow sticks that bother some people. They make you turn right when you come out of some of the locations where you're usually used to turning left, and they're there for your safety. Our numbers, the question is, do they work? And we're going to show you that they do. The top-left corner is Rick DeCesar. He's our chief engineer out on the ground. He is the mastermind behind a lot of this, along with Stacy Pigford, designing these. This is a very hands-on project when they're trying to tackle these different intersections. No two are alike. And so he and Stacy developed these one-of-a-kind, just really, they are works of art out there. He calls these leftovers. A lot of times you can turn left to go in. It's different than the leftovers you would have, you know, after dinner, but we call them leftovers. I just think it's a great thing. One of our largest projects that we did was out here on 10th Street. If you're out near Hastings Ford, we've all seen someone standing in the middle of the intersection, or I'm sorry, in the middle of the roadway, trying to get across that roadway. Might be a mother and a child, or someone pushing a stroller. So this is one of our real crowning achievements that we've been able to do so far. This is the actual installation going in place. This is about 300 feet long and requires a lot of hands-on labor. There's some of our team out there, some city staff and contractors working. These large rubber mats are called modular medians. It basically takes where the state would plan on putting a permanent median in the future, and it sort of puts something in place until we get there. I can remember sitting right here in council when the state, along 10th Street, I'm sorry, along, yeah, 10th Street here, had planned to do some significant improvements there. That kind of got pushed back, and it got repaid. But we took some of those ideas and designs and said, where can we put crosswalks and protected turn lanes now? And how can we accomplish that until the state is able to come back and do a larger project there? And so this was the application. So you'll see that's representing a crosswalk being put in near to you, and actually way in the back of that screen is a second crosswalk going in place. And in between where the tractor is parked is a turn lane where you can turn into that shopping center. Again, you can turn left to go in. I haven't received any complaints from the businesses. They're still getting the same amount of traffic in. It's when you leave the business that you'll make a right-hand turn and go home safely. It might not be the direct route, but you'll get home much more safely. These are some of our completed locations. I'm sorry about the size of the checkmarks, but there you can just see they're representing that we're trying to balance our work all around the community. One of the ones I'm most proud of here is the one here on 10th Street. This is right by the college. This is a little diagonal area that students had used historically for probably decades, crossing the street here. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of students every day crossing this. This took a lot of work to put in, just getting those flashing signs in the middle there. There's so much infrastructure underneath that roadway that Rick had to work with the state engineers to come up with some unique solutions so they didn't have to bore so deep. They come up with a larger concrete pad that could balance it and sit on top of the ground to hold those posts. Just a lot of thought that goes into these things. I come to a meeting and say, I need a crosswalk here, and then it takes lots of discussion to make that happen. Do they work? Here's our year-one comparisons. Now, some of these have been in place for a couple of years now, but we took our first four and took a look before and after, and the numbers speak for themselves. These are the number of crashes before and after at those locations. And some of these crashes, even though they're listed here, are nothing more than minor, maybe a rear-end collision. They're not the historic really bad crashes. The one at Arlington and Smithwick, the first one there, that involved a fatality before we put these in, and the ones afterwards are not fatalities. And here's the outcomes. This is just looking at these couple of intersections. Sometimes in public safety, we can make incremental improvements, and sometimes we can fix things. And I call this a fix. When you can take 75% of a problem, make it go away, you've fixed a problem. And so I'm just real proud of these achievements. We'll talk a little bit next about some of the planned and upcoming larger projects. Lisa? Here we are. We're all the way at the bottom here. We moved from number one down to number eight, and this is state rankings that I talked about earlier. We used to be up there at number one. You can see 2017, which is right here, and then we moved down to number eight. I listed the other ones because I figure everybody want to know who they are.
Thank you, Charlotte.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And you did an excellent job at explaining some of those delineators and modular medians. Thank you. So these three locations are our next three planned locations for delineators. We have done the design on these, or what we feel like needs to happen in order to protect the left-turn movement out, or eliminate the left-turn movement out. These have all been approved, and we have purchased the equipment to install. Right now, we're working through encroachment agreements for Greenville Boulevard and Memorial Drive. As the chief mentioned, it really is a true team effort, as we control roads right of way within our jurisdiction, as well as NC DOT controls right of way within our jurisdiction. So we're working through the encroachment process, and the goal will be to install these on DOT routes. The intent may be that they are temporary until DOT can find a way to fund a more permanent solution for the project. So... So these are some other projects that we currently have underway. Of interest, Memorial Drive, or actually, we'll start with Hooker. Hooker Road Lighting and Crosswalk Project. You may be aware there, right where Walmart is located, getting back and forth across Hooker. We've had some incidences recently, but those go back further than that. So in 2019, we actually installed the second high-visibility crosswalk on Hooker Road. We chose the location here in the picture, which is at Horseshoe. The reason we chose this location is because it's a densely residential neighborhood, dense residential neighborhoods on both sides of the road. And this also provided a pedestrian refuge. So it already had a median there. It gives pedestrians a break after two lanes of traffic. They can wait safely and then progress onward to the other side of the road. So that was installed back in 2019. And then more recently, here in March, at the beginning of March, we installed advanced pedestrian warning signs for both this crosswalk, as well as the one at the Walmart driveway or entrance. And then we followed up with a request to GUC to increase the lighting in this section. So between Arlington and Greenville Boulevard on Hooker Road, we will be, or GUC will be installing on our behalf 12 additional lights. So that really should light this area up pretty significantly for us.
Excuse me, is that in response to the accidents we've had there this year? We've had a few there, right?
We have.
We wish everybody would use a crosswalk, but we know that that doesn't always happen, so the idea is that we just light the area as much as we can and do our best to prevent them.
So next, we'll jump into Memorial Drive. This one has been a project for a few years now. It is 3.3 miles of Memorial Drive from the Tar River out to Greenville Boulevard, a total cost of about $400,000. But it will improve the lighting significantly along this corridor, so it adds 53 additional lighting fixtures that aren't currently out there, as well as converts the 90 existing fixtures to LED. What this means for us is that a light, a road light, street light, will be placed approximately every 150 feet on this corridor. So this is kind of the current status that I go through next, which is in January of '22, so this year, we received approval of the lighting plan from NC DOT. And then that was followed up in March by an approved encroachment agreement from NC DOT. So GUC is converting the existing overhead fixtures to LED, and they have recently ordered the materials to do the new infrastructure that we're installing, the new 53 lights, additional lights that we're adding. There is a 20- to 24-week lead time on those materials, if that gives you any indication to the supply chain issues. And then, once they get the materials in, it'll take them four to six months to complete all the underground work for this project. And lastly, we have Evans Street and Howell. So management met out on site after the recent accident that we had out there, pedestrian accident, and collaborated together and kind of came up with a staged approach to improvements at this intersection. So we've got intersection improvements, as well as pedestrian improvements in the area that we recommended. Since Evans is a DOT road, we made these recommendations to NC DOT. So there were delineators or curb that we recommended at the intersection with Howell. What that would do is it eliminates the left-turn movements out from both sides of Howell onto Evans, and it would eliminate the through movement across Evans. The second thing that we asked for was a high-visibility crosswalk to include an RFB and a pedestrian refuge in the median, and then a reduced speed limit from 45 to 35 miles an hour from Deck to Howell. So right now, the status of that request, the intersection improvements, DOT is discussing with their safety team and studying it. They need to make sure there's no unintentional consequences to cutting off the left turns. That could be emergency access. That could be deliveries, truck access, that kind of thing. So they're researching that. In the meantime, they agreed with the pedestrian improvements and submitted those through their team, and projects will be selected at the end of April. And they feel like this one will score very highly, so they're confident that it'll be funded for the pedestrian improvements.
Before you move on from that, can you go back to that map? Are we confident that people would use the crosswalk in that location?
So when we went out there, I think we would all agree that the majority of the pedestrian traffic was coming from the driveway area.
The lower driveway.
Mm-hmm.
The ones on the left.
Over to the housing across the street.
Okay.
They actually were not crossing at the intersection, which was a relief because there's a lot of conflict there with all the movements, so.
And one more question I've got. It's kind of, it wasn't listed on here. Have we looked at, you know, potentially looking at traffic safety and pedestrian safety initiatives over by Kristen Drive in Greenville Boulevard, over there at that intersection? I know we've had some accidents in the past. There's quite a few actually that take place over there. I don't know if it's as much for pedestrian, but, you know, crossing across those essentially five lanes of traffic is very, very dangerous, and I think the visibility on each side is very, very, it's very hard to see in both directions. And I know we've had some people that have had some pretty serious accidents in the past.
Yeah, it's been an area we've talked about. We haven't made much progress over there yet. We've talked about taking a look at the bus stop, which is actually on the left-hand side, and moving it to the right-hand side when you're coming out of Kristen Drive. And then we have concerns about pedestrians getting let out on the opposite side of the street and having to make it across that. That is a highway. That is a highway. That is a highway.
It is.
And the speeds out there and the way that road is curved, it's, I think it would do well to have one of those 10th Street-style modular medians placed out there, but that's going to be, that'll be a good discussion. And a great lead-in to Jeff Cavanagh's coming up here in just a minute from NCDOT, but I'll put him on the spot.
Well, I was going to say, I was about to say, didn't they reduce the speed over there by, I think, 5 miles an hour or something, roughly?
That one? Okay.
But Mayor, we can certainly put that on the list and ask this. I think the good news that we can't lose in all of this is that this has been some success due to the partnerships that were formed in the community. I mean, this is really, really great work, but certainly, there's more work to do, and we can take a look at Kristen Drive for that.
Yeah, I definitely would. I know we've talked about that. I know Mayor Protem Glover, it's in your district, and I know you brought it up multiple times too in the past, so it'd be great if we could look into that and look at ways to help out that area as well.
Yeah, we have a meeting this week, and we'll just make sure that's on the agenda, and we'll discuss that again there.
Thank you.
So, we have the three Es for traffic safety, we call it, and they're, the engineering you just heard about, enforcement and education are the other two pieces. So, this is a little bit of the education and enforcement together. So, these are some social media posts. Kristen will take these pictures and put them out on social media, get some buzz going, ask people where they want to see us next for doing some speed enforcement, and it engages the community a little bit. We can't write our tickets to write ourselves out of a problem, so we try to address it from an engineering standpoint, education standpoint, and ultimately, you do have to go out and write some tickets. This shows our traffic stops and traffic crashes. Basically, what you're looking at are traffic stops. We're doing traffic enforcement in areas that we know have crashes. So, we're trying to be data-driven in our approach to everything. And this is where all the credit goes to. So, the Traffic Safety Task Force was formed several years ago, and when I saw we had a traffic safety problem in the community, I couldn't approach it all just from an enforcement standpoint. I needed to bring a team together, and I actually was part of a injury prevention team out at Viden, and that's where I got to know Ms. Sueann Pilgreen. If she can join me now, that'd be great. And I just, I was impressed at how she ran a meeting with a bunch of doctors and a bunch of people had busy schedules, and she was managing that. And I thought this would, really fits in well with injury prevention, and I asked her to come alongside us and really be our project lead. So, it wasn't me, everybody's not reporting to me. We're really reporting to her. She manages this team, and ultimately, we get to bring these great things back to you. So, you want to just talk a little bit about your role in this?
Well, one number one, it has truly been an honor. So, from an injury prevention perspective, crashes have always been, you know, at the top of the list in terms of things that we need to focus on. But, you know, as he has already talked about, engineering and making those changes is really key. You know, you can't, tickets, people aren't going to necessarily change what they're doing. They're not going to necessarily, you know, always slow down just because that speed limit tells us, you know, what to do. So, you know, we kind of have to force some of these things. And so, from an injury prevention perspective, just really partnering, we were already doing some traffic safety and crash prevention-type work. And so, when Chief Holtzman reached out, it just seemed like the natural connection. I'm sort of the homework assigner of the group. We have a log that we keep up with, an action item list, and everybody, every single item on there, it's tagged with the responsible person for everybody to see. And when you don't do your homework assignment, you get called out on it. But it has really held everybody accountable for what they need to be doing, and it's a rarity that people don't complete their homework assignments. And if something isn't completed, then we have to, you know, give a reason why it was not completed.
They're probably scared of you.
[laughing]
That's a good thing.
Really not as harsh as I'm making myself sound, but it has worked. You know, I think we're all adults, but we, sometimes we need to be pushed along in order to kind of keep us on track and keep us accountable. I think we all want to be accountable, but sometimes it's not always easy.
Yeah, absolutely.
It really has been a pleasure, though.
Thank you, Sueann. And I'll ask Jeff Cavanagh to come up. Jeff is the Division Engineer for NCDOT. You heard a lot tonight about encroachments and what that means. Basically, it's getting permission, the city has to get permission, to install things on state roadways. I won't put him on the spot about Kristen Drive, but I will ask him to talk just a little bit. You'd mentioned the last, at our last meeting, a little bit about some quarterly meetings that you all have at your level, some safety-type meetings for different fundings and how you review certain things.
Sure.
Do you want to touch on that?
Sure. Thanks for having me and Mayor and council and staff. Thanks for inviting us to meet tonight and speak to this for a minute. But yeah, we do have, safety is, you know, one of our main goals, and not just safety for highways, it's for safety for basically, you know, the public and whatever mode of transportation they're in. We have a safety, a regional safety engineer group, and that's all they do is traffic safety. And so, we meet monthly. We have, our committee meets, and we go through all the projects or the projects that have started, and they come through basically where all the accidents are happening, much like, you know, what the chief did. That's what we're looking at. And so, we're starting to look at where the accidents happen, why they're happening, and what can we do to take countermeasures to prevent them. If, you know, if people didn't make, I'd say, mistakes there once in a while, you know, we wouldn't have accidents that we do, but, you know, everybody makes mistakes. And so, we try to do things to, you know, counter that. And one thing that is always the hard issue at intersections is the left turns. If you could fix the left turn movements, you can fix an intersection. And unfortunately, when you have left turn movements, just, that's where you have a lot of the T-boom accidents, and those traditionally are the more severe. And so, that's what we try to look at first. And so, with some of the delineator projects, we're trying to convert those over to something permanent. That way, a snowplow in the middle of the night, didn't take them out. I told them I have been around for a while, and concrete will stop a snowplow in the middle of the night, and folded up underneath the axle. I can attest to that. So, we're going to try to work through these, the ones that we've been able to put down, and convert them over to concrete, so they'll be there forever.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. So, Jeff, either Jeff or one of his team are at every one of our meetings. I really appreciate, I mean, through the years, they've been at these meetings consistently, and we have some healthy discussions. What can we get done? And the results speak for themselves. They're all over the place around our city now. I do want to just mention one more partner, and that is the City Council. You help fund us, and we take those dollars that you give us in our lighting and traffic safety and turn it into these projects for you. The average project, the smaller ones are around $8,000 to $10,000. Larger ones like 10th Street, $30,000, $40,000. But we feel that that is a great return on investment for your dollars and for the city tax dollars. Our partners, you met Sueann Pilgreen, Ellen Walston also from the hospital, JP Walton from Viden Medical Center, Len White, DOT, Bailey Harden, Matt Johnson, sounds like I'm mentioning, it's like a NASCAR fan here, I'd like to thank Chief Randy Walson, Viden Hospital. Let's see, Chief John Barnwell from ECU PD, Rick and Stacy, we talked about them, Elliot DeJesus from the City Transportation and Planner, Jordan Andrews, Major Chris Ivey, our Traffic Safety Supervisor, Sergeant Mike Ross, and PIO Kristen Hunter, and the data guy behind all this, Logan Magnuson from the city. So, it's a big team effort. That's it. All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for all your hard work. Go ahead.
I just have one note for me, for Lisa. The pedestrian crossing on 10th Street's like a huge win, right? And I've heard lots of people talk about what a cool thing it is. I have gotten a little bit of feedback on it, on that the students sometimes stream across in onesies, you know, so, you know, you can, you can like block it up for five or six, you know? And so, they're, I don't know if this is people or not, but the question was, could, is it possible for that, you know, to put a delay in it so that, you know, you can't reactivate it for like 10 seconds so that, you know, the students clump up and then crossed or something?
Right.
Not asking you to do it, just saying, that's the feedback I've gotten.
We'll look into it to see if it's possible.
Green light for the pedestrians.
That's right.
It is good if they're using it and pushing the button.
I was going to say.
Oh, yeah, they're pushing the button. Yeah, it's just.
I hate to push back at all, because getting them to use the button was the key for so long.
Oh, they're doing it. It's working.
I have a question for you, Lisa, before you leave. Thank you all for that great presentation. I know we've had some fatalities in some of these areas, and so it's good that we're making efforts to fix that for the future. Hooker Road from Dickinson Avenue to Arlington, some of the lines are completely gone. Have we looked at all into maybe painting that?
We do. We are preparing a contract to restripe Hooker and Moy, I believe, are the two key roads.
Okay, great. And so, the speed limit change from 45 to 35?
On Evans?
Yes. So, is, we're going from 45 and then 35 and then back to 45?
Well, it's a request because it's an NCDOT road, but our thought was to, it currently changes to 35 miles an hour at Howell.
Okay.
So, the idea was, as people come into town, to slow them down at Deck Street, which gives them time to reach the full slowdown before they get to Howell, where the pedestrians would interact with them.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to say thank you to the whole task force. Thank you, Ms. Pilgreen. Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh, for being a part of it, and everybody else that served on it. It's important that we're all working together, and we're getting feedback throughout the community to be able to understand, you know, how we can make sure that, you know, we're working on getting our numbers down. We've had a lot of fatalities lately, and it's important that we're taking steps, and clearly, through your leadership, we've been able to make some big changes. And I think as we continue to move forward, we'll make more changes. So, thank you for your sacrifice. We all know it takes a lot of time and effort to go to these meetings, but your work is very valuable to our community and many of the citizens in our community as well. So, thank you, guys. Move on to item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a Budget Ordinance Number Nine to the '21-'22 City Greenville Budget, involving the Capital Projects Fund, Special Revenue Grants Fund, and the Donations Fund. And I'll call Financial Services Director Byron Hayes for the presentation. Byron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Budget Amendment Nine. Budget Amendment Nine includes adjustments to the following eight funds and a breakdown of the amendments. We are appropriating fund balance to the City Manager's Office for carryover funding for Greenville Grooves. It's an increase to the general fund of $20,000. Transferring occupancy tax reserves to the Facilities Improvement Fund for convention center maintenance. It's an increase to the FIP fund of $100,000. Recognizing funding received from the North Carolina Science Museum Grant for the Love of Sea Turtle Program. It's an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of just under $35,000. Recognizing funding received annually from Greenville Utilities Commission for the city's energy assistance program. It's an increase to the Community Development Capital Projects Fund of $150,000. Recognizing donations received within the Parks Department, which is an increase to the Donations Fund of $152,000. Transferring funds within the Wreck and Parks Capital Projects Fund for EPS renovation change orders. That is a net neutral impact to the Wreck and Parks Capital Project Fund, $15,000. And lastly, we are recognizing additional grant funding and, or grant revenue and matching funding in the Transit Fund for ADA expenses. It's an increase to the Transit Fund of $190,000, which brings the City of Greenville operating ordinance to $151 million. And staff recommends approval of the operating funds ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund ordinance, the Grant Special Revenue Fund ordinance, and the Donations Fund ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions?
May I try for it?
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the review of the April 14, 2022 City Council meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. On April 14, the council will consider appointments to various boards and commissions.
First one we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Mayor Protem Glover.
Okay. I don't have anyone to dial, but you can.
Okay. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Do I have two or three?
You've got three. Two are eligible for reappointment, Duckershaw and Dallas Clark.
Okay. I'll continue. I've asked the two that are eligible for reappointment if they would like to be reappointed, so I'll keep you posted.
Okay. Human Relations Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
All right. I have Suzanne Kamis and Talika Harris.
Okay. All right. And next is the Police Community Relations Committee. Councilmember Smiley.
Continue.
And we've got one more for Councilmember Daniels.
Continue, please.
All right. And Youth Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
Youth Council, I have Landon Elks.
Okay. All right. And that concludes the appointments, Madam Manager.
Thank you. The council will also have public hearings on the following items. An ordinance to annex Lyndale East, Section 5, Phase 1, involving 16.94 acres, located at the current termini of Rupert and Remington Drives. Item number five is an ordinance requested by the Covington Group, limited to rezone 4.65 acres, located between Turnberry and Smithwick Drive and 240 feet east of East Arlington Boulevard, from general commercial to office residential, high-density multifamily. The council will hold a public hearing to consider an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of a dwelling located at 805 Biltmore Lane, known as Tax Parcel 22884. And item seven is a public hearing to consider a resolution to close a 20-foot alley north of Dickinson Avenue, west of Moy Boulevard, and enjoying the southern rideaway of CLNL, CLNA Railroad. Additional items, item number eight is a resolution authorizing an application to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the '22 Historic Pass Through Grant to Perform a National Register Architectural Survey and District Nomination Tentatively Named the East Fifth Street Historic District. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the application to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the '22 Historic Pass Through Grant to Form a National Register Historic Survey Update and Nomination for Additional Properties in and Around the College View Historic District. And item number 10 is the Fiscal Year '22 Third Quarter General Fund Financial Update and a Preview of the City Agreement Fiscal Year '22-23 Proposed Budget.
Thank you very much. Now, move on to the City Manager's Report.
I have no report, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to comments by the Mayor and the City Council. Let's start with Councilmember Litchfield.
No comment.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Did a.
Councilmember Smiley.
No comments.
Councilmember Bell.
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels.
I'd like to thank staff for all of their hard work and all the presentations tonight, and also remind everyone that this is, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. I know you see the pinwheels around town. If you see something, say something. Child abuse is all of our responsibility. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Glover.
I would like to, I've had some vendors call me about Town Common, some food vendors, and they were, they asked me to bring it up, that maybe they could be there at lunchtime during the week sometimes, because a lot of people, it's quicker for you to leave here and get down to the Town Commons than it is to go out and try to buy food. So, I thought it was a great idea, because that would be some activity for the Town Common as well. When people are down there, they can buy their kids Ices or whatever. And so, if you, Madam Manager, would you look into that and report back to us?
I will. Happy to do that, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I want to send condolences out to Donald Davis's family and one of my classmates who passed this weekend, and also LaFores Baird, I don't know her married name, was one of my classmates as well. So, I want to send condolences to the families. And that's it.
All right. I want to say a big thank you to everyone that worked really hard this last weekend. We had an incredible weekend here in the city of Greenville. Opening ceremony for the Little League Baseball was incredible. It was great on Friday night. Saw a lot of kids that were out there, happy to be out there, happy to have the opening ceremony back and have everybody back out there on the field. So, thank you to our Recreation Parks Department for that. Thank you to everyone that participated in Pirate Fest. I've heard nothing but positive things about Pirate Fest this weekend. I want to say a very special thank you to Courtney with Uptown Greenville. I want to say a very special thank you to Courtney with Uptown Greenville, with Holly Garrett with Emerge. Both of them worked extremely hard to be able to get this to come through. And then, also, I heard nothing but rave reviews from our city's own, Margot Clark, who worked really hard to be able to help out and make this event really a great thing for our community. And thank you to all our city staff that participated and all those that volunteered to be able to put that, that great event on. It was great to see everybody out, and it was great to have Pirate Fest back after a two-year hiatus. So, I know people were excited to be outside, even though it was a little bit chilly at times. It was good to be back outside. And thank you to our Recreation and Parks Department again for putting on the Easter Egg Hunt. I participated in that, and it was a fun time. I literally did not participate. My kids, my kids participated. I did. I did. I will make a joke. I did ask our Recreation and Parks Department Director, Don Octagon, where the 38 through 40-year-old age group was, and he looked right at me and said, "In the woods." So, thank you for that. We had a great time. Appreciate all the hard work on that. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our attorney, Emmanuel Magirt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A, 1, 3, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to law or not a public record, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and a personnel matter to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee.
May I try to approve the closed session?
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
We are officially in closed session.